Forget when we had the discussion about. We're just doing a lemonade stand.
Brother Reese.
And I was like, I don't care. I don't care. There's a certain point where it's not a thing. He's on the corner.
Almost gavel banging time, huh?
Yeah.
Is that the new woman that was here last meeting?
Yeah.
The new resident?
Well, that's probably a business.
That's the woman that was here last meeting?
Yeah.
What?
Uh, so that was, uh, Lana, Lana.
Oh, yeah, no, he's not coming. That's why he came earlier, even though we had an appointment set up before.
No attorney today, huh?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, let's call this meeting to order for Planning and Zoning Commission for August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any conflicts with today's agenda?
It's yours.
Not for me.
Nope.
No.
All right. Let's move into approval of the minutes, um, from July twenty third, twenty twenty five. Anyone have any comments on those?
I was not here, so I have no comment.
I don't have anything on them.
Nope, I'm good.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Should we do the both of my, or motion ma- I make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, of July twenty third?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
You agree to your approval?
All right, well, move to the minutes from August sixth, twenty twenty five.
I do have one comment to make on those minutes, and that would be, um, well, it starts on page four, the appointment of a new planning commission chair and chair pro tem. Um, we stated that, uh, Jamie moved to, uh, appoint you and me as a pro tem. And then it said that, uh, um, Jamie moved to appoint Shane as a new chairman and Jerry Vesely, as chairman pro tem. Jerry Vesely seconded the motion, but we've, we forgot to add that Weston Reese brought the motion to the table.
Oh.
That makes sense, Kelly? In other words.
Yeah, I brought the motion. Yeah. Cause I said, can I do it? And they said, yeah, and then I did it.
Well, uh, again, I, I think you, I, I, did you make the motion or just take the recommendation?
I did. No, I made the recommendation, then I made the motion as well.
Oh, I, well, I, bad me.
It's okay.
My, my notes indicate that Weston did it and I was the second. So, there you go.
Yeah, I was excited to move down, so I made that motion.
Other than that, then I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
August sixth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move into the continued discussion and possible recommendation on the short term rental code.
Okay, I hear, uh, uh, um, I'm just gonna, um, bring up and go through some of the things that were maybe we were pondering on and maybe hadn't yet fully resolved, so we can get those resolved and move this thing on. Kelly, I'm gonna take over the screen. Um, so the short term rental code, after we had, of course, we had, we had some recommended language. We had a public hearing, um, I went, I re-went through the notes from our public hearing and, um, and some of the things that I thought were still a little bit unresolved, and I've just kind of compiled a list of things that we could potentially, um, work on. Um, oh, by the way, Scott needs to be excused, um, he is up in Payute County. He had to host all the sheriffs of the county, of the state were coming to Payute County to his place up there, so he's gone tonight. Um, so there was some, there was a lot of talk about fees, um, with the short term rental code. And fees are not something that, that we typically codify. It's something that the city council, um, will usually set. In fact, last city council meeting, we updated the fee schedule for the city. Um, I will make a recommendation that whatever we take to the city council, we'll also have a discussion about fees. Um, so again, not something that is put into code, but if you have any opinions on that or anything like that, what I'm, what I'm doing for the city council, I've, I've been putting together a document that shows what other cities around here do, that, so we can kind of see a little bit of a spectrum. I have a, I have a table already set up, so that the, as the city, as the short term rental code is adopted, they can also adopt a fee structure. So if you have any strong opinions on that, either grab one of your friendly city council people by the ear or shoot an email that says, I think it should be, you know, more strict or more lenient or something like that. But we won't, we won't go into it anymore here. Um, so about actual code stuff, um, occupancy restrictions, I think that we resolved this, um, first of all, I have, I, in our last meeting, I was, I had changes marked on. So any changes I made in the meeting, you'll see that are, that are in red. We added the word permanent, we got rid of thirty on thirty to sixty minutes. We added rural estates to areas that they're permitted, um, and then, um, local contact person there again. Then occupancy, this is the way we left it, and I can't remember if we were all totally comfortable with it or whether we wanted to still look at it and think about it or modify it. The way it currently reads is no more than a maximum of one guest per hundred and fifty square feet. And I don't have any other notes, other than just to bring it up and make sure we're comfortable with it, because there was a lot of discussion.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I think everybody was comfortable with it.
Okay. The other one that I know that we weren't a hundred percent settled on was parking. And it's really the only other, um, thing that I have, um, from one, from my notes and kind of where we left it. Um, personally, I struggle, um, two off-street spaces. By the way, if, if you have, you know, if you have a driveway and a garage, that's easily satisfied. If it's a single house, you know, that's, that's fairly easy. Um, we don't designate whether they have to be dedicated for the STR, like what if you had an internal room that you were short term renting? Do they have to have two dedicated spaces for them? But, um, rather than get into that, I, I looked at maybe some different options of what we could do. Um, let me just read through four options and see if you guys like any of them. Um, and one of them is basically what it says. The first option is we could do something based on number of bedrooms. For an example, one space off-street parking per bedroom or point five spaces per bedroom. You got to round to a whole number, um, capped at some number. This is the way Saint George City does it. They re- they require one space per bedroom and they cap it at five total. Um, the pros, it's easy to administer. The cons is it assumes that one bedroom equals one car, which is probably an overestimate, unless you allow the decimal points or something like that. Um, option two is based on occupancy. We talked a little bit about that as an option, how many the short term rental sleeps. So you could do something like one parking space required for every two occupants that the place sleeps or every three occupants or every four occupants. The, the nice thing about that is it, it aligns with how the rentals are actually used and it discourages party houses in neighborhoods, because if you had a twenty occupancy home and you had a two occup- now, now you gotta have ten spaces. It's gonna kind of, it's gonna naturally put a restriction on, on how many, on really large party houses located inside a neighborhood. But, um, anyways, just an idea there, um, that could be done. Um, three is a flat requirement, which is basically what we have written right now, and that's just two off-street parking spaces. And then the other requirement, which I was complaining about in the last meeting about being hard to enforce, since generally you can just park on the public road and it's hard to know where they belong to. But, um, the other con is that an eight, an eight-bedroom unit is required to have the same amount of parking that a two-bedroom unit is, and that seems like it doesn't really scale. Um, and the last way is a hybrid. Um, I kind of like this idea myself, um, so when a hybrid would look like two off-street spaces for all STRs, STRs plus one space for every two people the STR sleeps or every three people the STR sleeps. Or you could say two off-street spaces plus one per every two bedrooms or, you know what I mean? You could make it so that it actually has a clause that grows. Again, that's easy to calculate and easy to administer, because you're doing it on the approval upfront. And it's also easy, if we did tie it to occupancy, if we are looking at it, we can look and see what they're advertising their occupancy at. Like, so if somebody tells us one thing and then cheats the system later, we can go back and say, guys, um, you're advertising for twenty, twenty people and you only told us originally you were gonna have four, you know, so I don't know. That's just some ideas, just throwing it out there. I don't know what everybody thinks or wants to do.
I think I like the hybrid. What do you guys think?
We can leave it open and then tighten it up if we have problems, but parking is one of those things that usually ends up with neighbor complaints. When they get out of control.
We also discussed enforcement of that.
Uh-huh.
How is that gonna play?
Well, so that's why I'm suggesting more of a simple solution that we, we require it on the, we require it on the front end based, tied to some metric of the size of the place. Because then we can not give, either give the permit or not give the permit based on the parking spaces. And generally speaking, if there's parking spaces there, the guests are gonna use them.
Right.
Wouldn't it mostly be enforced after a complaint too? It's not like have to go around and patrol this.
Right, no, I don't want, we, we don't, I don't want to have to go through and do enforcement. Generally, we're gonna get complaints, and if you got a house and there's twenty cars in front of it, what's going on? And then we can go on the line and look, and it says that it sleeps forty, and we're like, okay, that's not what they applied for. But if we don't have something in here, it'd be harder to enforce after the fact, unless we come back and revisit the code because of a problem.
Uh, I'm, I mean, to be on the official record, I'm pretty sure my good buddy Jed Townsend would love to enforce that every day. Welcome Jed.
We know Jed's listening. He's got nothing better to do than watch Planning Commission.
We'll see how much he loves me. Uh, I like the hybrid. I like the approach of the two, um, within requiring what, you know, a space for every, I mean, the number that keeps ringing in my head's three.
Three guests or three bedrooms?
Three guests, additional one for every three guests.
Beyond what number of guests? Cause how many is two sufficient for?
Well.
Probably four people average.
So do you have a?
Back to that large family situation too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would, I would be more comfortable once they were before.
Husband and wife and a couple of kids, that's a, that's a carload, but they're gonna occupy, you know, several bedrooms.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I was with a group of people at an event in Saint George, and we were talking about this topic, and I said, uh, a parking space per room, per room, and they acted like that was like so strict. And I was like, yeah, that's our intention. So I don't know, I just threw that around. But also I wanted to say that they do the sixteen passenger vans, you know? That happened.
That's a good thing, cause that's less car.
Vacation rental my house, there'd be two or three of those sixteen passenger vans. So, yeah, I hear you, but people do get creative. I mean, if you're trying to make it into a party house.
We'd rather have one, twelve sixteen passenger van than six cars with two people in it each.
That's true.
Right, from a parking perspective.
We.
That was just my, like, research I did over the last couple of weeks, just on accident, was just talking to people and thinking about it, and I'm sure you've done the same thing.
Yeah, the bigger, the bigger vehicles, in this context, the bigger vehicles would be better.
Right.
Cause we regulate occupancy in the square footage.
My brain goes to four on that, because usually like, if you're starting at A and B, there's not three people, there's like two couples or two.
I wanna, I wanna say, in the engineering, don't quote me though, and no one quote me on this, but I wanna say in engineering planning standards for parking lots, they, the numbers four they used ac- actually, four occupants per space.
So if we said something like, two off-street spaces shall be required for all STRs plus one additional off-street parking space for every four guest capacity beyond four?
I would say way more than four. That's only two people in a car.
Well, but, so, so I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is you have already two off-streets, and so how many people are gonna be on average inside those cars? Where now you're gonna need more parking spaces when you go past what two parking spaces will give you. So if we assume, what, there's four people riding in a car?
Yeah.
That would be eight?
Eight.
And there's a better way to word this, I, I know there is, but I'm just kinda get a concept right now.
Yeah.
So two off-street spaces shall be required for all STRs plus one additional off-street parking space for every four guests beyond, not the initial, that doesn't make any sense. Beyond.
I'd just put above eight.
Yeah, above eight.
Above eight guests.
Yeah, above eight guests.
Of eight guests advertised. Oops. What do you think about that?
Would you want, would, rather than advertised, we wanna be approved?
Yeah.
Approved, yeah.
Because you're, you're approving occupancy and.
Right.
Yeah.
Jerry, what do you think?
That's fine.
Yeah, I like it.
Weston?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay. Think you've got enough head nods on that one.
Okay, I don't have anything else. We eliminated the three hundred feet saturation. We, we figured the ten percent cap was the thing. Fixed the word platted. Um, everything else, we kind of went through and we're kind of good. I did, I don't know if there's, we were all gonna take this and kind of let it simmer.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else has anything they wanna discuss? You wanna allow?
Sure, go ahead.
Comment?
Cindy Lefoon, and I had a question about, I shared this with, um, a client of mine that has short term rentals, and she had a problem with the ten percent citywide cap. How do you, I mean, how do you, how are you gonna regulate that? And how are you going to determine who is allowed to have a short term rental and who isn't? Because in this instance, you're gonna have to keep track of how many overall, um, you know, residences you have citywide.
So this is, the, I, I totally agree, because administratively, we're gonna have to figure out how to enforce that. So this is the, this was the wording, this was the solution that I came up with. And it says, no more than ten percent of total housing units may operate as STRs citywide in the event the ten percent cap has been met. It should actually be fairly easy to determine when we've met it. It's just when we've met it, it's now fluid, because we have populations that change and growth and all that stuff.
Right.
In the event the ten percent cap has been met, the city council shall by resolution direct city staff in how to administer the process of permitting new STRs as existing STRs discontinue and as growth occurs. So in other words, the, this would, the ordinance would say, the city council needs to make a resolution that says, this is how you're gonna administer that. Are we gonna create a list that we revisit once a year and then have a waiting list? Or how is the way that they wanna go about fairly administering that? Give some guidance and some rules for us to follow? Or come back and revisit this? Um, but it basically just says the city council needs to provide additional context by resolution.
I didn't get a copy of, is this draft available now? I didn't, I don't have it.
I can hit print on it as it sits, and it was, um, it, it's, it was available, um, for the public hearing and all that stuff, but, but we can definitely get your copy as it sits.
Okay, I, I don't have it. I, is this the one you had at the last meeting? Because I do have that, but I didn't bring it with me this evening.
Yeah, this, the way it sits right now was with modifications made in the last meeting. There were some, there were some little tweaks that were made. So these, these things kind of progress with different drafts. We, we, we fix it and give something to the public for the, for the public hearing, and then, and then it gets tweaked. If it gets changed in too big of a way, then we really need to have another public hearing. If we make some major change to it, you know?
Okay.
Um, and who knows? The city council, by the way, is, is allowed to have another public hearing before they put any ordinance, but they're not required to.
Right.
If it's something big enough and we get enough public, um, clamor that people really wanna have more input, then I usually recommend the city council have another public hearing, so.
Okay. Um, she also had, and I, I didn't, I wasn't following, sorry, I was watching something else. Did you still have the three hundred foot separation?
Nope.
Nope.
And then we took that out?
Yep, took it out.
Um, and then I just had a, a question or maybe a suggestion on the parking, um, because you said two parking spaces, um, they'll be required to have two parking spaces. Um, does it designate if those are passenger vehicles or commercial vehicles? Because two buses, um, or even, um, you know, like a, I don't know how many passenger, you know, the, some of these passenger vehicles are, you know, more than what you and I drive. So if you get two of those, are you designating if it's two passenger vehicles or two commercial vehicles?
Um, we could add a definition there. Typically, if we say enough, a parking space, we're gonna define that as a, a typical parking space, and I'm pretty sure that's, I, I don't, I'm not gonna say I'm pretty sure. Typically, that is defined as an eleven by eight or whatever it is in the, in parking code. Um, if we wanted to specify here, we could say to.
Well, Dan, in that.
Standard parking spaces.
You've also used in your equation the eight, so that equates to a normal passenger vehicle.
Yeah.
So.
But, but this is what we're requiring them to put in, and we're not gonna require them to put in commercial parking typically.
Oh, no, but I'm just saying in this, you know, definition, when you say eight, you're alluding that those two are gonna be four.
I mean, we could add the word two, y- no, I get you. We, we could put two standard off-street parking spaces that be required. I mean, that wouldn't be a bad context, but typically would be assumed that that's what we're talking about.
Eight and a half by eighteen is the standard.
Eight and a half by eighteen? What did I say, eleven? Yeah, eleven doesn't make any sense. Maybe a compact. Did you have any other questions or thoughts?
That's it, thank you.
I don't know if everybody likes the idea of adding standard parking, but.
Ah, I think it's fine, cause it's already assumed.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I think that it would probably be a good idea, obviously, this will be the mayor's call. But in city council, especially as we will be setting fees, probably to have another public hearing anyways. We have, we have made some modifications since we had the public hearing. Having another public hearing is never a bad thing. Lots of transparency is good, but especially whether we've had a lot of involvement. So I think that if we're ready to move on from it, we ought to probably recommend that to the city council. They can do whatever they want, but we could recommend it, right?
We all feel good enough to make the recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the end of our list?
This is it? That's all I had?
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation.
All right, I make a motion to, um, take the short term rental code and move that to city council with the recommendation that they have a public hearing to, um, listen to fee schedules.
I would, yeah, I'd say public, public hearing on the whole thing.
Yeah, on the whole thing.
Including fees.
Including fees.
I second that.
A second? Any further discussion?
No.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 All right, we'll move into item number five, a continued discussion on the fence ordinance. Dan, you wanna give us a little quick recap on, on that?
Absolutely. I did just hit print on that after I accepted all fees. I don't know if anybody wants to run it. I printed two copies. If anybody wants that copy, then Kelly can make copies. Okay, so fence stuff, this is where we're at on fence stuff. Um, we didn't have a lot of discussion. I did a, we had a little bit of discussion. I did a fair amount of, um, of presentation of the issues. We had some questions that I kind of threw out there into the, into the, um, void and then said we were gonna come back and look at it. Um, as I kind of was preparing for this meeting and looking through it, one of the things that we discussed that we really needed was a definition of sight obscuring fence. Um, I see this done two ways. One is to say sight slash sight, because, or sight or, and then sight in, because it, they literally both apply. On one hand, you're trying to obscure a commercial site, and the other time, you're trying to obscure sight through the fence. But it's the same point. You're trying to obscure visible, visibility through the fence. This is the s- the definition that Cedar City had. I don't know if I love it. I thought I had read it before and I really liked it, but I don't know if I love this one. Um, a fence or wall of not less than six feet in height nor more than eight feet in height, a sight obscuring fence or wall shall be constructed to city standards and shall be constructed from materials and workmanship to permit vision through not more than ten percent of each square foot, more than eight inches above ground and eight inches from the top of fence or wall. Example, masonry, composite, chain link with factory inserted vertical slats, vinyl, wood slats, or other material manufactured and designed for fencing purposes. Um, another concept that I saw as I was looking is that we could have actual three definitions, and we may need three. Um, I, I went into detail on, on one. This would be kind of in lieu of what Cedar City had. We do have a use in our, in our fencing code. By the way, we're not digging into all of our fencing code, but one of the parts of our fencing code says that a fence in a front yard on a corner lot, um, we're, they're required to have a fence either be, um, I can't remember what the word is, non-obscuring or, or see-through if it's on a corner lot because of traffic. Like, you wanna be able to see traffic coming to an intersection. So they either have to, if it's a solid fence, they have to lower it to two feet high max. Or it can be four foot high, cause that's what we allow in a front yard, if it's, if you can see through it. Like, if it's a chain link, you can put a four foot high fence on a corner. But you can't put a solid fence on a corner, right? So there are different times in our fence ordinance where we might have the need for a non-obscuring definition, which we don't have.
Yeah, sounds like we should revisit that one.
Yeah. But, for, from, but we don't really, do you wanna revisit that, that, that requirement?
Yeah.
Why's that?
I just think that's unreasonable.
Well, it's a safety thing.
There's, there's plenty of beautiful fences and hedges that go out to the corner of the property line. It, it would make more sense to have people not park their cars and RVs right there. Or plant a row of trees down the sidewalk. Or plant a row of trees down the sidewalk. Than to dictate to people that they have to have a two-foot tall fence, which is useless. A puppy dog can jump on a two-foot fence.
So you can put a tall fence, it just can't be solid? That's the way our co- current code reads. Weston's saying he doesn't like that code and we should change it.
Yeah, I don't like that. I think four foot would be more reasonable and if, if it need, if someone wants to plant vines on it or something to obscure the sight, fine. I think that's way overkill. Not, that's a subject right now.
It isn't, but we can certainly bring it up if there's, if the commission wants to bring that up. All I'm saying is, is right now, that's in the code and we don't have a definition of what that is. A, a non-site obscuring fence. This, you know, we could have something that says greater than fifty percent visibility through the fence. Um, obscuring, um, the, the Cedar City definition, as we read above, has basically ten percent open, which means ninety percent obscured. We recently, the council got into extreme detail on whether or not a site obscuring fence was site obscuring. Um, there was a chain link with slats. And if you run the slats vertically, there's a lot more visibility through it than if you run the slats diagonally. And so we didn't put any definition, we just said chain link and slats. They installed chain link and slats and it was like, well, you can still see right through it. So, um, are there circumstances where we would, we would wanna say this definition? An opaque or high screen fence, less than or equal to five percent open. A fence wall or screen that substantially blocks visibility so that no more than five percent of the surface area is open when viewed at any angle perpendicular to the fence. I don't know what any angle perpendicular to the fence means. That's ninety degree angle. That's the definition of perpendicular. Um, acceptable materials include closely spaced wood or vinyl boards, masonry, composite panels, or chain link with full, continuous diagonal slats or fabric. Decorative gaps, joints, and textures shall not exceed five percent openness threshold. The five percent openness threshold. So, um, again, we can just call site obscuring, site obscuring and set a percentage and allow different types of fences, knowing that in our other code, we're gonna say it specifically has to be masonry or not. So, not sure if there's any conversation about that.
I like the three definitions.
And, and I haven't even got, gotten a definition for these two. I just was working on this one and thought, well, crap, we don't have a definition for non-obscuring.
It's probably a good idea to have definitions, should we use them anywhere in the code. I do like, I do like the range, because I, I checked, there's lots of cities in Utah, that's pretty much the standard. That's six to eight foot, the range.
Mhm.
I do like that.
When, when we get down lower in the code where we talk about commercial to residential, we have a specific height defined. So, um, this just says a site obscuring fence has a range, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but there's different requirements of site obscuring fences in different areas, so. Okay, I can, I can go, I can get some good definitions for these two.
Okay.
And I can give you more information on that other. I'm just trying to remember it off the top of my head.
Yeah, let's hope and I can-
Maybe when you read it, you'll, you won't hate it so bad, but maybe you'd wanna-
Oh, don't count on it.
(laugh)
I'm anti-reg, remember?
Yep. Okay, so, um, RV parks. I, we, we talked about what the RV park says. My question is, do we change it? I think we, I think we need to modify something. Do we wanna say that this supersedes fifteen oh eight, one seventy, which is where commercial abuts residential? So that it's very clear that they have to do only this all around an RV park, regardless of what's next to them? Or do we wanna just completely get rid of it and let the other code apply? Meaning, around an RV park, they may have one requirement versus commercial versus, the different requirement versus residential. We just let the other code prevail? I, I think we could take, we could take either, either approach, but we probably need to do something.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should just get rid of it. So it's all, everything-
And when I say get rid of it, I'd say we just plain point to that code.
Yeah, so it's the same for all the other commercial.
But theoretically, if we do that, if they're next to raw land, they wouldn't have to put any fencing in whatsoever.
Mm-hmm.
And then when somebody else comes in and builds on that raw land, they would have to put in the fence. I think what we would want to do is just point to that and specify that an RV park is considered a commercial use.
What was the last part, Dan, I did?
We would wanna specify that an RV park is a commercial use.
Definitely a commercial use.
Does everybody like that?
Yes.
Whoa. So let me just, let me just write in, you know what, actually, I'm not changing anything yet, so I'm just gonna say. Park is considered a commercial use and heroin municipal code. I'll fix it. Something like that. Sound good?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'll, I'll bring back, bring it back when it's more ready to go.
Applies.
Applies, yeah. Okay, um, so, again, this is our code. Um, when we were talking last time, I was pointing out the problems with it. And then I read the Cedar City code and I think everybody was like, oh, that's really interesting. That kind of solves a lot of these problems and answers a lot of questions. Um, my question is, is do we want to work through modifying or changing our code? Or we wanna simply look at Cedar City's and maybe tweak or modify it? Um, real quick, let me, let me cover how Cedar City's code solves some of the questions and problems that we had. The way they do it is this. Site obscuring fences shall be required along the boundary line in the following cases. Commercial and industrial developments. There's two cases. First one is, is somebody who is developing commercial next to residential. The second one is, somebody is developing residential next to commercial. So this is the, whoever's getting a building permit concept. On all commercial and industrial developments in areas zoned accordingly, having a common lot line with property used for residential purposes shall require the construction of a six-foot-high site obscuring fence. That's important, because that, that means that if they're building and the property next to them is, is, is empty, it's, it's unbuilt property, they are not required to put the fence in. They're required to put a fence in, not based on the zone next to them, but based on if there is current residential use. So somebody's got a house, regardless of whatever the house is zoned, if they're using it for residential, the new commercial has to put in a block while buy that house. Now, if you have a commercial development that's already sitting there and there's raw land next to them and they come in for a residential development, or if we were to rezone it residential, in the case that we just did down by the freeway, the residential development, having a common lot line with property used for commercial or industrial purposes, shall require the construction of a six-foot-high site obscuring masonry fence. So effectively, this just says whoever is building at the time is required to build the fence if they're sitting next to something that's used that way. And it kind of ignores zoning.
Why are they dictating masonry versus other?
I don't know. In this case, they do add the word masonry. They don't just say site obscuring.
Right.
They could have said just site obscuring and then that other definition applies, right?
Yeah, right.
And I guess they're figuring, in, in cases like this, masonry gives an additional buffer of noise and security, I guess, I don't know.
Quite a bit more costly as well.
A lot more costly, which is, which is a factor, right? I think that we gotta be sensitive to what we're actually asking people to do and build, 'cause masonry fence is expensive.
I don't think we should be hardline of that nature and, I think we should give them options, as we did, talked about prior.
So you're questioning whether we should use the word masonry?
Correct.
And-
Rather than the-
My question is also, are we comfortable with six foot high? 'Cause it could be six, six foot eight, seven foot four, or eight.
I, I still love that range. Six to eight, six feet to eight feet.
So, so would you say six to eight feet? Let them do whatever?
Mm.
Well, they're probably not going to opt for higher, right?
I mean, if they wanna go higher, they can. I don't think we need to put it in there.
So we could say at least a six foot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or min.
Minimum, yeah.
A minimum.
Oh, yes. There you go, that's good.
What does everybody think about the, the masonry requirement?
I think we should go back to that site restriction stuff and give them options.
I mean, if commercial was building next to me and I was residential, I would want a masonry fence.
Yeah, that, that brings up, you bring up the-
You know, 'cause it is commercial.
You bring up the thing I was thinking about when we were, after our meeting last time, because I wasn't sure where I was at. And it's like, what we're mitig, what we're, what this is, the point of this is to mitigate a, a more intensive use, which is commercial.
I, I would go out on a limb, without knowing this a hundred percent, say it's pretty probably standard, that commercial residential separation is masonry.
It's pretty standard.
Yeah, that's what-
It is, it is a high bar. Usually, the commercial that's going in is the one paying for it. But if you're doing a residential development next to a commercial that's already sitting there, I mean, at the end of the day, what we're trying to, what we're trying to stop is, is impacting homeowners that are gonna come in and complain to the city.
Yeah.
And be impacted.
Yeah, 'cause they're-
I mean, I had a guy yelling at me in my office today and the mayor, he's mad about lights coming in from the new school filled house. Now, there's no way a six-foot-high masonry fence would even affect this one way or the other, but he is like, it shines right in my eyes and just really mad. This wouldn't fit, this isn't gonna fix everything, but there's a lot of conflict between commercial or industrial and man.
This would have really helped in this RV park situation that we just had.
Yeah. Well, from everybody but the RV park's owner (laugh) perspective, yes.
Yeah, we know.
It would've been nice to have been clear, let's just put it that way.
Well, yes, because there was, there was a con- a contradiction between RV and, you know, commercial. And they really use the RV, you know, to their advantage. And so it was, you know, it was hard to really define specifically. And they, of course, wanted to go the least resistance, so.
Masonry in or out?
I say in. I think that's pretty normal without-
We're gonna have a public hearing and you guys can vote when we actually send a recommendation. I'm just trying to figure out what to put in the language for the public here.
I think I'm, I'm with Jamie on masonry.
Team in, team in, team out. Weston?
We should probably go with masonry.
Okay. We'll leave it in. Um, this, of course, is a little caveat that carves out mixed-use commercial residential developments. That's an obvious carve-out.
The only way you could really get away from saying masonry is if you started defining certain uses have to be masonry, like a construction yard or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gets complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial's broad and that gets messy.
Don't think an RV park makes enough noise to warrant a masonry wall on those grounds, but.
Okay. Moving on, changes in density. This is the other part that we really needed to kind of address. And I think this, well, you decide whether you think it's, it works or not. This is, think R two next to R one, three, or R three next to R one, stuff like that. Any property which proposes residential commersion adjacent to a property used for residential purposes, where the difference in total number of dwellings is three or more, shall require the construction of a site obscuring fence. Notice, it doesn't say masonry. This provision shall not apply when the less dense property already exhibits four or more units. So this doesn't get into R one, R two, R three. It, this doesn't get into zoning at all. It just says, if you're coming in for a building permit, a- again, the person getting the building permit, if you're building something that has a greater difference than three. So in other words, if you're gonna put a fourplex next to a single residential house, you would require this. Threeplex or a duplex wouldn't.
Mm.
The difference is, is three or more. Um-
That's weird.
And, you know, we were dealing with this with Juniper Hills, by the way. It's getting ready to come back for the planning commission review. They have been going through, um, design and utility review and all that stuff. They have, um, well, they're townhomes, but they're, they're phase two of the condos, which they had an application in before we did our rural done right. And they have basically, effectively, townhomes on a single piece of, no, I guess they're gonna be divided into individual properties. The density is definitely higher. And, um, in their backyard is a single-family residence. So we were discussing what would apply fencing-wise and between them and the commercial and between them and, uh, single-family residents behind them and between them and the single-family residents on the other side, what would apply. And they could do wood slats and they could do all these different things, right? This would just kind of define it as total number of dwellings. I might say the only other thing we could do is say density per acre. Residential units per acre is more than something or other. 'Cause in this case, they're actually gonna divide their properties into individual, you know, they'll share a common wall. So dwellings is actually one per lot or per parcel in this unit, which is clearly like a condo development. So if you did a density approach, it might be a little bit more, um, easy to, to deal with.
Yeah.
A little more easier to define. No more than three residential units. Well, I don't know if you'd say-
We use the word lot.
'Cause, 'cause one, R one allows essentially four residential units per acre. So you could say, and an R two effectively doubles that. R, R three, um, well, you can get down to six thousand square foot lots, so however many, is that about eight? So more than four residential units an acre, higher a density, something like that? 'Cause we don't really allow new multifamily developments more than fourplexes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Of, yeah, well, townhomes, but, but a townhome is a, we don't allow townhomes, but we allow fourplexes to be on a twenty thousand square foot lot. Yeah, again, eight, maybe, maybe you could squeeze nine into an acre, so. What do you guys think? Do you like that, this concept?
Yeah, I like the density approach.
So how about we say three or more residential units per acre? Does that read? Where the total number of dwellings is three or more residential units per acre.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
Shall require the construction of a side obscuring fence. This isn't masonry, but masonry's probably not as important. You could see a, a, a privacy's vinyl fence, or-
Mm-hmm.
Something like that. Now, if we don't de- define a height, then we're back to the default in the definition, which is six to eight.
That's fine.
I think that's, and we can put it again here, but I think that's probably-
It's not a fence unless it's six to eight.
With a minimum height of six feet. Okay. Said fence shall be reduced to thirty inches in height inside your front yard. Now, actually, we need to, um, we need to make this sig- if, if, if we're, 'cause this is probably their rules, ours is a four foot high fence in the front.
Yeah, I like the four. Forty.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, forty.
Inches in height inside the front yard setback.
Way better than two.
But it doesn't address corners.
Doesn't address corners. Okay, then they have conditional uses. Remember this, this was this weird thing. So in the case where we give a conditional use permit for a commercial inside a residential zone, think the post office, 'cause we get a lot of complaints about that. In the case of a commercial development permitted by conditional use in a residential neighborhood, fencing may be addressed by written agreement between the adjoining property owners. Said agreement shall be subjected to the, submitted to the planning commission and city council for approval and be part of the conditional use permit. Um, I would suggest, first of all, we don't have city council, because conditional use permits don't go to the city council. Unless you guys want to pass the buck when we're allowing them to come to an agreement. Um, I think that it's probably, it, the ex- it, at the point where they have a pr- of an agreement between the two, it's probably not gonna be controversial, so-
Yeah.
Back to, maybe we get rid of city council.
Yeah.
But the question is, so other than this, they are going to be required to install the masonry wall, but this would allow them, if they have an agreement, not to. Right? Because by definition, if you're gonna do a development with a commercial use next to a residential use, actually, no. Because this says in areas zoned accordingly. So if you're allowing a conditional use, it's not zoned re- commercial, and so you'd have to have something that would apply. So we could say, so I'm just talking through the logic of this. In the case of a commercial development permitted by conditional use in a residential neighborhood, um, we could just refer to this, G one A applies unless there is an agreement.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm gonna get there, I'll put it right, but.
Okay. Do we need to, up there where we're, what is it, one A or? Do, on who builds the fence, the time of development? Do we need to add in there who maintains this fence ongoing, to specify that? I think that helps in-
Yeah.
Administering it ongoing.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I think typically, whosever property it's on is typically who maintains it, but.
And I would agree, in a residential area, where, but where this is kind of between two types, two uses, and you're, you're mitigating a more intensive use, more impactful use.
Oh, by the way, I think we need to add the phrase to be installed by the developer, just in case it's not clear. Because-
Yeah.
Some people may say, okay, that fence is required, but who has to put it in? It should be always the commercial, right? So, um, yeah, maintenance, I would almost rather, if we're gonna look at it, that we look at it in the, in the, in the context of the whole fencing code, to say, people are required to maintain fences on their property, and if a fence is split on the property line, it needs to be by mutual agreement, or something like that. Typically, if somebody comes in for a fence permit, we're gonna say, you have to build it on your property, you can build to the edge, but you have to build it on your property. And if neighbors want to split the cost, we'll let them put it on the, on the property line, right? But you'll literally have sometimes where people will put one fence on their property, and somebody else will put a different style of fence on their property line, and you'll have two fences back to back, 'cause that's what they wanna see. And, and then the maintenance would be whosever property it's on. 'Cause some people are like, I don't want that fence. You can do what you want on your property, but I'm not gonna pay for it, I don't want a part of it, therefore I also don't wanna maintain it. And I would think that that kind of, that doctrine would apply. Whosever property it goes on is required to, to maintain it. And in that light, whoever is in, required to install this would probably put it on the edge of their property and then be required to maintain it. Just kind of talking this through.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you need an agreement if two property owners agreed to share the cost, share the fence, or that be in agreement?
Yeah. And by the way, that's all, our, our current code is all silent on all of that.
Yeah.
This is just kind of administratively how we go about it when they come in for a fence permit. There's a lot of disputes over fences. Typically, we just stay out of them, and it's a civil matter. But when they come in to install a new one and want a fence permit, that's how we go about telling where they can and can't build it.
On your heights, uh, did you agree to do six, or were you doing the six to eight?
We said a minimum of six.
Minimum.
Minimum of six, so are you gonna say?
You wanna put a maximum number?
Six to eight? Well, I don't know, you did on, where did you put that six to eight?
We didn't.
The six to-
Yeah, it just has minimum of six.
We ended up not putting it in.
It's six to eight is in the definition.
Okay. So you didn't put it in?
No.
Nope, these just say six foot high minimum. But in the rest of the fence code, you can't go over eight, w- other than certain circumstances. That's the way it reads. How do you like that?
The Great Wall of China.
(laugh) Okay, anything else, or did anything I say? Get any more thoughts? Why is there not a U in the word forty? There isn't.
No.
No, it's F O R, T E Y.
So does everybody like that? I kinda like Cedar's code, and modifying it like we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can come back, so I'll come back with a proposed, um, proposal that'll be, I'll show our existing code, and I'll go through and I'll edit it and replace this. I'll come up with some three definitions of obscure, non-obscuring, obscuring, and opaque slash high screen. Oh, if we're gonna do that, then we're probably gonna wanna use that definition down in the commercial, right?
Mm.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, let me just highlight that in yellow. We'll call that opaque slash high screen. Um, okay?
Do we, do we wanna schedule a public hearing, or wait?
Well-
Let's add it one more time.
It depends, if you think it's, if you think it's good, I can hurry and create this. The, the goal is to have something the public can look at the entire time that it is noticed, and we have to do a ten day notice. So I think that I can get that ready to go before Cali puts in a, um, public notice. That gives me basically today, tomorrow, and Friday to wrap this up, give it to Cali, she notifies the public hearing, and we can have it next time.
Is that enough time, Dan?
Yeah, no, in this case, it's not bad. This isn't like some of them that are like, oh my gosh, that's a lot of work, this is pretty easy. And then if-
There's no real hurry, is there, Dan?
No. And then if the way I did it, doesn't, you don't like it, you can change it. Or we can table it to the next time, see what I did, and then schedule a public hearing. That's probably the cleaner way to do it, since we're not in a hurry, but.
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Any, any objection to that?
No.
To do that?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll have chair.
Yeah, we don't need to, do, may, take any action there then, right? We'll just move it on. All right, we'll move to reports. Councilman Burton, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Not for me?
I think.
Nope.
I'm just waiting for the state to give us updated wooey code that we can dig our teeth into. We're required to have something done by January first. When I looked last week, they still have the code that was done in two thousand and six. So soon as they drop something, US forestry and li- wild lands, fire, whatever the name of that is, then I will shoot it out to you, and we'll start working on it, but that's all I have.
Keith? All right, we'll move into public comment.
I have, um, one comment, I think the heading on your agenda says that this is the meeting for August sixth.
Yeah, we changed it.
That was fixed?
Yeah, we changed it.
Depends when you print it, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, well, the other thing that I would suggest on these fences, when you're talking side obscuring, and I know Dan's gonna work on a definition, we ought to include the words per square foot. Because a side obscuring fence, it says greater than or less than fifty percent. You know, it can be side obscuring here, and have a dead tree here, or a open space there, and, you know, you get a different thing. So if you put in the per square foot, then you can measure it that way.
And I think that Cedar code did that, so we'll make sure that's-
In one place, yeah.
We'll make sure it's incorporated, I agree with you there. And they leave, they leave some wiggle room for the top, for decorative stuff with block wall.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Shane, I'd just add that I think it's good to take some time, because we hurried this in one instance with the council, and it caused some real problems. So I don't think it hurts to be a little bit thorough on this.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second the motion.
Favor?
I-
I.
Me- meeting adjourned.
Slam that gap.
Oh. I was gonna say-
Dan?
Molly, you need to get that seatbelt. I said, you need to tell Molly to get that seatbelt. To get that seatbelt. Yeah, I was gonna say them, and I forgot.